They were funny, I mean, we had, I think, the only league I used had just two. That was the only, that was after the women's league. And we played the other town in the middle league. The rise of women's.
Call this right with me in order, Carl Ruhl.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Council members Swanson.
Here.
Navery.
Here.
Fabian.
Here.
Newman.
Hi. Will you stand and join us in the question?
What religion is the United States of America and the true republic of which stands one nation under God, municipal, liberty, justice for all?
Any further comment? We will go to approval for minutes.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on Monday, June nineteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Motion's been second, any corrections? Carl Ruhl.
Council members Swanson.
Aye.
Navery.
Aye.
Fabian.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye, now we'll go to approval of minutes with our city attorney counsel.
Invoices.
Invoices.
Sure, uh, in the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have, uh, bills in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have bills totaling sixty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-four defense. In the Department of Public Safety, we have bills totaling one hundred and five, six hundred and forty-two dollars, one hundred and four, one hundred and five thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. The Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have bills totaling one hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. All council members have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
Mayor, I move that we approve the invoices, um...
Ezra.
Presented.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments or corrections? Carl Ruhl.
Council members Swanson.
Aye.
Navery.
Aye.
Fabian.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye, now we'll go to regular business and we'll go back to city attorney.
Okay, uh, we have ordinance number O dash seventeen dash O one five. An ordinance accepting and dedicating property for roadway purposes. This is to formalize Peggy Lane as a public roadway. This ordinance has been reviewed in advance by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we, um, advance ordinance O dash seventeen dash zero one five to a second meeting.
Second.
Motion's been second, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Rachel.
Just a quick comment on this one, this is for, um, Peggy Lane that runs back to the transfer station, currently it's not dedicated, it's a public road, um, so those that use it have an easement over it, we just never got around to dedicating any, but that's what, the best way to do it, and all the easement agreements will then cease once the road's dedicated to public road.
Motion has been second, any comments? Carl Ruhl.
Council members Swanson.
Aye.
Navery.
Aye.
Fabian.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O dash seventeen dash O one six, an ordinance amending the Princeton City Code, Chapter Nine, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article One, Section Nine dash thirty-six, drinking on public property. This ordinance further amends Chapter Seven, licenses and business regulations, Article Nine, Sections Seven dash three thirty-two through Seven dash three forty-seven, alcoholic liquors. This ordinance has been reviewed in advance by all council members and is submitted for disposition. It's this for, this is first reading only.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we advance this ordinance to the second meeting.
Second.
Motion's been second, I'll turn this over to Rachel.
Just a couple of comments on this, so the change to Chapter Nine was language that was added, um, to accommodate some recurring events that take place on public properties, so for instance, J.C.'s, um, beer garden during homestead, the homestead lawn event, our sidewalk campaign policy, and then also the street concerts. Then there were also some changes to the liquor license, license ordinance, I'll just go over what those changes are. Uh, Class G was added, and that's for city events only, so city sponsored events, still would need a permit from the city and the state liquor commission. Um, Class P, the only change there was we changed it from five standalone gaming license to three, and that was a discussion that the planning commission had last month. We added the Class S special events, um, this is for only nonprofit license holders, so, um, only people that are nonprofits could get that. Then the T temporary license was just tweaked a little bit, um, in that Ts would not be allowed on AA streets, um, public streets to public properties. So those are the changes to the ordinance, any other questions?
Uh, motion has been second, any comments?
Um, yes, uh, for Class G, city events and festivals. Is that paying, is it for profit, can you get a special permit? Is it a not-for-profit, is it city only?
So, city events only, so really the only thing that this would be for is the street concerts, because it's a actual city event, so the city's closing a street, not a private business.
Okay, and the festival would not be homestead?
Right, and the city doesn't close a street for that.
Okay, so let me, I just wanna make sure I understand this, G is something to close a street, and it's basically for a city event, street concert, whereas it is a city there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, city events only, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't benefit someone who privately wanted to close a street, and they wouldn't be able to get their license.
Any further comment? Carl Ruhl.
Council members Swanson.
Aye.
Navery.
Aye.
Fabian.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R dash seventeen dash O twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a financing agreement with Midland State's Bank for major capital purchases totaling four hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. This resolution has been re, in, has been reviewed in advance by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution R dash one seven dash zero two two.
Second.
Motion's been second, now I'll take it back to Rachel.
Okay, so this is for some items that were discussed when the department had, um, during the budget process, we didn't have the funds at that time, but we do, we would, uh, take a short-term, three-year loan out for these and pay them off over the next three years. The items are two police vehicles, um, one whoring machine, uh, Ford Explorer, the utility vehicle here at City Hall, and then, um, one John Deere Vaco. Uh, bids were submitted to all the local banks, and we received all the responses back from them, and Midland State's was, um, had the lowest interest rate at two point eight five percent, and, um, so we would like to proceed with them. One other thing I'll mention is that we are, an ordinance coming up, probably in the next month or two, will have, um, surplus items, all of the city surplus items, and vehicles and equipment that we're gonna be looking to get rid of as we replace some other vehicles, so that'll be coming up soon, that's all I have.
Rachel, are there five of these excess items, or twenty-five?
Oh, there's a lot, yeah, I, the department has it all submitted, what they have, and then our planning is striking, working on putting that all together.
And how do we dispose of these?
So we'll have an ordinance that allows us to bid them.
To auction.
To auction them, and then we'll do that, we're trying to figure out the best way to do that, because...
Okay, and I see that two police cars are gonna get replaced, are we, are you developing kind of a cycle, so we don't have to purchase?
Yeah.
Some vehicles like what happened some time ago?
Right, that's the plan, we don't wanna get stuck purchasing, um, you know, eight vehicles at one time, we wanna kind of replace them throughout the years, um, so Justin and Tom Rutt and I have discussed that, so we'll look at the vehicles with the most mileage, and they're all getting up there in mileage, so we'll take the two that are having the most issues and replace those.
Makes sense.
Motion's been second, any further discussion?
Uh, quick question, uh, that Explorer for City Hall, who, who exactly is that for? Does everyone?
Yeah, so anyone, typically Pete, Brian used it a lot, um, so his positionally he's at the fire department, he's taken it for training sometimes, um...
Including the zoning department, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Just making sure whoever we end up getting, we're not having to buy another vehicle for them, that they're able to use us?
Yes, this would be included in this.
And the money's from the auction, uh, go to, uh, first payment?
Yeah, that's the plan, so a part of the terms with the bank was no prepayment penalties too, so depending on which department and which fund, um, the income comes from the sale, we would put it towards those.
Rachel, if I could, I have a quick question, so, on the police vehicles, eighty-nine thousand for two, roughly, uh, forty-five thousand a piece, so are we trading in vehicles then, or what are we gonna do, the old vehicles?
Well, yeah, so the two will be put on this auction list, that's correct.
Well, they go in the auction, those two police vehicles. And then I would say, you know, I'm very supportive of making sure we have proper equipment for the different departments, I know the directional whoring machine, I know the electric department's released one in the past, so we did buy a chipper through premier, it was a demo chipper, did we do some due diligence to look for some demo equipment for that particular?
Jeff did, I think he can probably talk about that better than I can.
There just wasn't any available at this time. The people in the past that would normally trade in and lease a new one, they weren't doing that this year for budget reasons, you know, they just didn't have the money to do that, but we did look for one.
And I appreciate that, again, it's important they have good equipment, so I, I'm always supportive of equipment, as long as, you know, proof and they spend money. Uh, just getting up to speed still, um, the last time we bought these vehicles was two years ago, was it in June? Or, or, I'm sorry.
And we replaced all, uh, I think, places?
All of them.
Yeah.
He was a...
Yeah.
Then eighty-nine thousand for the two police vehicles, is that fully stocked with computers and everything?
Equipment, yes, and equipment.
Any further discussion? Carl Ruhl.
Council members Swanson.
Aye.
Navery.
Aye.
Fabian.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution R dash seventeen dash O twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to issue a request for proposals to complete the work at Darius' Miller Park. This resolution has been reviewed in advance by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Resolution R dash one seven dash zero two three.
Second.
Motion's been second, now I'll turn this over to Rachel.
Just a few comments, um, that are on the exhibit in this resolution, so the plans were also attached, but there's some changes, um, from the plans, so I'll just go through those really quickly. The sidewalks will be the same, um, as are shown on the plans, the steel benches, there's already two down there, so there'll just be two more purchased, so there'll be four total, um, but only two that need to be purchased. In here I put that we would need to purchase one steel trash can receptacle, but that's not true, because there's already two down there, so we wouldn't need to purchase any of those. Um, the trees, the plans had called for fifteen, um, but we've reduced this to ten, and there's a tree map included on here, so three trees will be removed, um, seven dying trees that need to be removed, and then ten would be added. And then, um, one thing that was brought to us by our electric department were these, um, USB pedestals, so that people could sit and charge their phones if they needed to, um, next to the benches, we thought that was a good idea to put those in there, as well as the in-ground electrical outlets, so if you have events or anything out there, we have easier access to get electricity there. Um, the next page goes over the cost, we had budgeted forty thousand for this project, but with everything I just mentioned, it's about nineteen thousand eight hundred minus the trash can, which was two thousand, so, um, two thousand dollars less than that. Um, would be the proposed, um, tentative cost for that, and then the plans and the tree schedule's in there as well. The drinking fountain was not listed.
Let me, let me, motion's been second, now further, now further discussion.
Okay, sorry.
Drinking fountain.
Yes, so we, eventually down the road if we want to, but at this time, we didn't have the drinking fountain, that's correct, just because of the price, but, um, that's something we'll look at next year maybe.
The plumbing will be there.
That's correct, I forgot to mention that, so the, all the plumbing will be there, so that when it is added, it could be over there.
What was the price?
Um, I, well, it was over five thousand, yeah. So we could do a different one, but at this time, we just decided to scratch the drinking fountain in general, and then decide what type or kind down the road. The one that was proposed, was it...
That was, that was in our plan, but when you look at these plans and you make adjustments, and, uh, which is what we've done, so...
So all of this has been already bid, or asked for management, or?
It's been, I've gotten the cost for it, but we'll...
Just verbal?
Yeah, or some proposed, since it, you know, it's not all the same project, it won't be sent to the same person, so...
Yeah.
The benches are the same ones we have, um, down there already, so some of them, and then we'd have to bid the trees out, so those could be, that might be adjusted, but these are the estimated costs.
Rachel, are we gonna remove the trees, or are we gonna hire someone, and is that cost included?
Um, that cost is not included, but we think we would remove them.
How many trees are being removed?
I think there are three, it's on the last map.
I guess I didn't look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, three of them.
Four.
Three, and then a new one, and that's just outlining the new holiday tree over there, but those are like circle, right? Yeah.
The holiday tree that you have indicated there?
Yes.
Is it gonna be artificial, or do we not know?
I think it's gonna be a real evergreen.
Okay.
Yeah.
The transplanting of the holiday tree that's up front is gonna be removed, but it is just, uh, too big.
Rachel, if I could, how about the, let's go back to the sidewalks, so we've got a budgetary estimate of, say, fifty-five hundred dollars for sidewalks, is that something worth we doing in-house, or?
That is correct, we're gonna do that in-house, put in his staff, we're gonna complete that sidewalk.
Very good.
So the majority of things will be done in-house, that's correct?
Correct, yeah, the planting of the trees probably won't be, but the removal of the sidewalk will be.
Plumbing and electrical work, yeah. The plumbing will be done in-house?
No, no, not being, sorry.
The funding of this, where is this coming from?
This was budgeted in tourism capital projects.
With tourism, the way I understand it, it's to promote tourism and overnight lodging, this is a gray area?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a gray area at all, and we've had this discussion, you know, in depth, you know, leading up to this, but, you know, it's all about, you know, the aesthetics of Princeton, bringing people to town and then bringing them back again, and, you know, and to stay in our hotels, and, you know, spend a couple of days here, so it's all about aesthetics.
It's just, it's one of those things where it's, maybe it's not spelled out well enough, but, I, I mean, you read into it, if we were a, a home rule community, you can use that tourism funds for basically anything, but it's, you read in the non-home rule, and it really seems to be based on more advertising, which, whether it be brochures, uh, television commercials, uh, numerous other paper items like that. It's just hard to say that a park with a sidewalk and several more trees falls into that.
It's, it's a tie-in to the, from the depot to our north end business district, and our, our depot and Amtrak is a, is a gateway to the city, you know, it's an attraction, um, you know, we wanna, again, this is also, tourism is also what we're doing with tourism, with the, uh, uh, rejuvenation of Main Street is also geared towards, uh, bringing business and industry to town, you know, business and industry wanna be part of a vibrant community, and Princeton is becoming a very vibrant community, and, uh, that's all tied into tourism.
And I, I can see where you can, you would think that it might be a gray area, but I would rather, if it is a gray area and up to interpretation, I'd rather interpret along the lines of, let's improve the park, it's the first thing people see when they cross the tracks and enter town, and the people that are traveling, they're looking for a park bench and a tree to stop and have some lumps, and it just seems to me like it's a, it's, it's a great front door entrance to the city.
And I would say that earlier, Bob Warren and Laura requested a, uh, legal review of this, and actually Bob, uh, went to an attorney at the city uses, did get a legal opinion, and that legal opinion basically did not shut this down, they, they did not see where this was, um, you know, would keep it from being a, a tourism project, and we're talking about not only Darius Miller, but we're doing on Main Street.
Council member Swanson, I called, uh, stated on this when we first started Darius' Miller Park, um, and it was explained to me that as vague as the description of tourism might is, it would be a stretch, but Darius' Miller Park could be considered to use as tourism money, uh, being the distance from the hotel, something two miles away wouldn't be, being that it's like a mile away, um, well, it's to come over that state, so, uh, but yes, the state of Illinois said it is a stretch, but they could see Darius' Miller Park being used for those funds.
That clears it up a lot, I mean, if, that's coming from the state, it's, it's kinda iffy, but, okay.
Then I ask about the budget.
And, you know, I think we're all in agreement, in my opinion, is, I think the trolley, we discussed that, now, did we use some tourism money on the trolley for maintenance and things like that?
Yeah.
Here again, I think the trolley's been a great asset, I think it's a great tool.
But we're using the trolley to pick up hotel guests, so, and promoting overnight gigs, but...
That's great, I'm sure we use it for other things too, but I think it's a great tool, so, I'm, I'm for this whole project.
Any further discussion? Carl Ruhl.
Council members Swanson.
Aye.
Navery.
Aye.
Fabian.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye, thank you, Pete, now we'll go to the city manager report.
Just a couple of things tonight, um, first I have the monthly cash report, I'll just go over a few items in this, um, we are one month in, May was our first month, we were above six point five percent of revenue, and seven point one percent of expenditures for the first month, we had one new hire and one separation of employment this month, we had about two hundred and eighty-three hours of training amongst our employees, um, when we look at building permits, we had thirty-three permits for May, and that valued one point three million dollars. A few more things, sales tax report, this is just for May again, uh, sales tax in May was up twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars compared to May of the prior year.
I'd like to say something on that real quick, if I could, um, this is the sixth month in a row that we have seen an increase in our sales tax revenue over the same month a year before, and nine out of the last twelve months, so, uh, retail sac, retail sales tax dollars are on the increase, and it's a consistent basis, and, uh, as I've mentioned many times before, that's, everything that is tied into tourism is what we're trying to do, is increase that sales tax revenue, that is what funds our street department, that's what's gonna help us fix our street curbs and gutters as we go forward.
Um, the other report is the hotel tax report for May as well, um, hotel motel tax is down just about two hundred and eighty-nine dollars compared to May of the prior month. Yeah, oh, I have a cash report, the next thing, I have, um, just some RFPs that we're gonna be putting out, I just wanted to get them on the agenda if you have any questions, and then once we put them out, they'll come back to council for approval. The first one is a request for proposals, um, for branding, um, for tourism, sorry, I forgot what I was talking about, so this is for a logo as well as a map, and this is done, the chamber, the tourism board is doing this, this is part of the money that the chamber receives to handle tourism, so they're gonna be putting out that request for proposal, and then it will come back when state, the governor for that. The other one is for a store security project, one of the capital items in our budget this year, um, in our computer and IT budget was this store security program, this is gonna happen over twenty to five years, as funds allow, but this is just kind of to move away from the keys and really go to a key lock system, so we can keep track of who's coming in and out, or who has the keys, so we can deactivate the keys when, um, someone leaves, and we can really monitor that much better. So we'll be putting out the request for proposal bid specifications, and then once we get those back, we'll kind of prioritize the buildings and decide over how many years we're gonna complete that project. Then the last one is, we also have a request for proposals right now for bids for brush repairs or replacements at the fire department and the power plant. So the, one other item I have, it was discussed at last meeting about the benches and turning them, so there's a map on here that Brian, um, put together before he left regarding some new places that have been approved, um, just a few changes to that, one says super walk, but that should be the Italian, and that bench would actually be moved down a little farther in front of Gleason Finance, and then there's also a bench by Sophistic that doesn't show on the map, so those are two changes that I was unable to make without Brian, um, so any, that's all I have from my report, so any comments or questions?
And, uh, you're fine with the placements, Rachel?
Yes, um, I mean, I think it'd be nice to have more benches throughout both, um, you know, in comparison to what we have now on the, on North Main, but this would move them up towards the building facing the street.
Each business that's gonna have a bench in front of them has been talked to personally, so they have all agreed that they would accept the bench and set it up the way that we're asking.
Yeah, we could, uh, you know, as I mentioned about a week ago, Jerry, idea that, uh, we move forward next year and maybe a year after, if we, uh, could budget, uh, you know, two to four more benches and to add as well, uh, if needed.
I had, um, mentioned to Rachel that maybe we could, uh, look at bench companies that are very similar in the same style, that might be more affordable, I think, between her and Pete are gonna do some of that. Um, I was in Madison, Wisconsin this weekend, and of course, I've been very observant on benches since we discussed benches the last meeting or whatever, and they do, uh, several things, they're not just putting them one direction, so they're kind of, uh, every direction, some face the buildings, some face the stores, some are parallel with the street, which our streets aren't as deep as theirs as far as sidewalk, but it was interesting to see, they had some chairs that were the same bench style bazaars, but they were single chairs instead of just a solid bench, and then what I found most unique was they had benches without the backs, so you can place those benches, and if people wanna sit and stare at the building and watch, they could do that, or if they choose to look at the street, and I thought those benches might be a more affordable option, especially the ones without the back, and then maybe we could place some back where some of the benches were, and not being biased, my wife has a bench in front of her, uh, business, it looks nice, people do utilize it while, especially husbands when wives are in shopping or getting something done, but it's got a back on it, uh, that would be an instance where I think a bench without a back to it would work out perfectly for it, um, it's parallel parking there because it seems to be more narrow on that end of town, and it's been that way for years and years, so I don't see that as an accident prone to happen as likely as cars are diagonally parking towards the vehicles, but this is something I, I gathered this weekend, and I thought it would be valid to share that with you guys, and that maybe Rachel could be, uh, pricing out some of the stuff, and then maybe we can get a bigger bang for the buck by going with something like that.
You know, we can certainly, I mean, if we go forward, if we, again, if we add benches, you know, like two to four a year over the next couple of years, it's definitely, I've also seen the chairs that you referred to, and I thought those were kinda neat, you know, so definitely looking to those.
Just a quick thing, when you mentioned the benches without backs, raises it like, it's one I had put a, it was a sample, and I thought it was interesting too, and just, 'cause we can look at a prices for those too.
I think it's a good idea, it could mix maybe both types of benches going forward.
But it seems to be a, a pretty popular style, if you look around at all the main streets, you've got some that are very similar also, kind of the same garbage cans, I guess the garbage cans are pushing two thousand dollars, which is pretty, uh, intense, but, but that way, I mean, might be worth making some phone calls to some of these other communities too, like what have you used, or is, you know, there might be other companies out there and might be five hundred dollars cheaper.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, and, you know, right now, we're not spending any money because we're using the benches that we have, and we're just, you know, um...
Reallocating.
Exactly, reallocating, but, you know, I'm, I'm confident that going forward, probably we'll be purchasing, looking to purchase, and I think that would be a good idea to look at different options, because, uh, you know, we're, we're talking about consistency, but, uh, you know, going forward, different ideas and stuff.
And the other parts too, having the two main street districts where it's not all one, they do, each had their unique characteristics about it.
Good idea, Rachel. Any other comments? Thank you, uh, Rachel, I just have, uh, I think, one thing on mine, we're going to move back our economic development summit that was scheduled for to take place in about a week and a half, uh, with Brian Gibbs' departure from the city, he was the one that was putting the, uh, economic development summit together, and, uh, he's kind of, you know, with his leaving, we're just a little bit behind the, the A-ball, and so we're gonna, we're gonna schedule it now for August third, next best date. we're going to schedule it now for August third, next best date, and, uh, and as far as Brian, uh, he's not here tonight, obviously, but, uh, Brian served the city very well, obviously why he was here, very well liked, did his job, uh, fine, took another job over east, uh, over Ottawa, and, uh, we wish Brian a one.
Time on that, do you have a time out?
It's, it's probably going to be eleven thirty to one, I think it's like we did the last time, over lunch.
Eight, also?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we have, yeah, we have to book that.
That was August eighth.
August, uh, third, I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, August third. That's, that's kind of, eleven thirty to one at eight, so that's going to be.
But August third is pretty fast.
It's.
Instead it's a time.
Ninety-five percent. Uh, any old business?
If I could, Mayor, I'd like to ask Rachel, without putting you on the spot, Rachel, we, I was kind of chuckling a little about the state of Illinois and how we have to abide by certain rules, regulations, but how are we with these existing projects that we spent some money on for engineering? I know we're talking on the federal level, the North Euclid, can you just give us a quick update on North Euclid? And also on the state level with the Safe Routes to Schools sidewalk program, can you give us an update on those projects?
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned Euclid, I had it on my list. Um, so we were still completing the historical report, section one oh six four F, that they were requiring that we complete before they let us move forward with that. I just got the draft version of the report on Friday, I read through it today, I had some comments and changes, so, those go back to the engineer to make that, and then it has to be approved by I-DOT. Um, what they had told us, as long as it's approved, then they'll allow us to move forward with the project. So, um, we'll just wait and see where that happens, Safe Routes to Schools, um, because of the state's position right now, we got a letter saying, no, if they don't have a budget, they're not going to fund that, so, we just wait on that.
And if I'm right, we're pre-approved, is this whenever they have a budget, or?
Kind of, so we were pre-approved, but the scope of work, um, was going to be done in-house, and with a big scope of work, it basically would have taken all of our guys away from all their other jobs all summer to do it. So, we reduced the scope and contracted out, so it was the same amount of money being spent, but it was a smaller scope. We met with the state officials to discuss that, and they kind of approved it, but they had to get approval from people higher than them, so, we're still waiting to get that approval from them, and I think because of the issues with the state right now, we haven't heard that from them.
If we had done it in-house, of course, we had to do it within one season, we couldn't carry over.
Right, and it, you know, we had met and talked about it, um, with our engineers and Quentin, Brian, and it just wouldn't have been able to pick up brush or garbage or anything else, so it was a piece of a.
And the report that, not Euclid, um, it has to be approved by I-DOT.
The state historical office in I-DOT, yes.
Approved.
Correct, mm-hmm. And once they make those changes, I'll be sure to put it on the next agenda, so everyone can see it.
What's your take on their accepting all this, that's after all this time, Rachel?
Well, they have assured us prior to submitting this, that this was the last step in the process, so I hope that's right.
And do they have money for this, this federal, this is a thorough question, would be your comment?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Any other old business, new business? Any public comment? I will, uh, then entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and to convene an executive session.
All right, Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn the regular meeting, then convene an executive session under Illinois statute to discuss the setting of rights for sale or lease of property owned by the public body. The next regular meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, July seventeenth, at seven PM at City Hall.
Second.
Motion's been second, call roll.
Council members, Swanson?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mary Querum?
Aye, and this meeting is adjourned, thank you for attending.
We can't do that, we can't, we can't get her most of that.
Yeah.
So, then he, I mean, eliminated, and ankle's down, uh, on that water, so it's a problem.
Oh, yes, that's the place, you're going to that, right?
I understand, yeah, we would just fly in here, on the door, and we took, we took, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Basically, they were going to be individual, and it's been Monday.
We would make it that way, though, they don't, they don't, they don't, they don't, they don't.
Oh, exactly. Exactly. You have, neither one has, you know, ever been like, oh.
Actually, no, it has to be individual, otherwise, it's not going to be, it'll be, yeah, it'll be, yeah.